Good afternoon. I would like to invite everyone to the Budget, Finance and Investment Committee meeting for June 17th, which is, of course, our public hearing. Got a few things I want to read off to you to start off with. And first thing, I want to thank all of you for coming and participating. It's good to hear from the public and we will take to heart the things that you tell us. I want to introduce some of the people that are here. First, I want to start with our county mayor, Mayor Kethren. Our finance director, Lisa Nolan, and our assistant director, Mark. And then our budget committee, myself, I'm Robert P. And then Trey Gooch is our vice chairman. Rhonda Allen, who's also chairman of Health and Education. Commissioner Phil Dodd. Commissioner Steve Piercy. Commissioner Paul Johnson. Commissioner Robert Stevens. And we've got a slew of other commissioners around, and I'm not going to name everybody's name because I'm going to skip somebody and be embarrassed about that. But one thing that I want to start off and kind of tell you how things will proceed tonight, I'll make this short introduction. Lisa will actually do an overview of the budget, after which we'll open the public hearing, and we'll set some ground rules on that when we start. But just to let you know that Mayor Kethren has made a recommendation, just as all our former mayors have, on 20.8 percent of the budget. And that includes the general fund, solid waste sanitation fund, the ambulance service fund, special purpose fund, the drug control fund, and the industrial economical development fund. And the budget committee makes recommendations on the debt service fund. Also, recommendations for the highway fund is forwarded to the budget committee from the road board, which is an elected committee also. Recommendations on the general purpose school fund, the cafeteria fund, and the educational capital projects fund are forwarded from the school board, which, of course, is also elected. Many of you know that have followed this process, the budget committees spent weeks -- meetings have been televised on Channel 19. The budget proposal has been published in the newspaper. The details of all proposed budgets can be viewed on the Internet. Before you leave tonight, we'll make sure you have that information. It'll be posted above. But at this point, we're going to let our finance director take over and give us an overview.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We're going to start high level and work our way down. So what we're mostly interested in, most people, is what's it going to do to my property tax? It's all about the property tax. So in starting is what is our assessed value that we are basing our values on. So in 2019, I give you this history just because I find it interesting, but assessed values for personal and real tax is estimated at $9.55 billion. The lines highlighted, those are our reappraisal years, and you can see those. From last year, we had a 31.6 percent increase in assessed value. 2014 was not so good of a year for us. So what we have presented to the public is a 20 cent increase to our property tax. County governments have to put to the public exactly where those pennies are allocated. And as the money comes in, these monies are allocated to the various funds. So starting with the 2018 allocation, we add seven cents for the county general, two cents for ambulance, 8.2 cents for education, which is for their operating budget, and 2.8 cents for education capital projects. Starting at $2, almost $2.10, taking it to $2.03. Picture view for those people who rather see this in a pie shape. You can see education is the majority of our property tax rate. So based on assessed value at $9.5 billion, $2.2994 produces a levy of $224.8 million with a reserve of 4.5 percent. Because when we budget this, we budget what we think we're going to get as of June 30th. So our reserve for delinquency is going to be $10 million. Gives our estimated collection at $214.7 million. Now of that, of the education component, we will be estimating $15.2 million that will go to City of Murfreesboro for their city schools. That's about 16 and a quarter cents of the $2.296. $2.30, 16 and a quarter will be going to the City of Murfreesboro school system. So people hear us talk about pennies, but when we speak to our pennies, a general penny for budgeting purposes is $933,651. The school penny is different, $794.51, because the monies that come in, as I just spoke to, a portion of it will go to the city schools. So in budgeting for schools operating, it's $794,000. So where does the rest of the money come from on this consolidated budget? You can see here, 32 percent comes from the current property tax. Other local tax makes up 16. The state of Tennessee makes up 40 percent of the consolidated budget. And most of that is the BEP monies. This gives you a little more detail about where the money is coming from in these categories. So where does it go? You can see county general, and Commissioner P. just alluded to this as he was going through. The county general makes up 17, not quite 17 and a half percent of the appropriations. Schools, again, take the biggest part of the pie. When you add the debt service that's allocated to schools, it makes up, all that together makes up almost 76 percent of the entire appropriation budget is allocated to schools. Another item of note, our debt service, when you add the two pieces together, our debt service makes up 8 percent of our appropriations, eight and a third. So the budget presented to you tonight, estimated revenues for all these funds, $621,259,299. Total appropriations, $642,851,470. So you hear us, if those who've been watching it, you hear us speak about being upside down. As presented, the revenues are under our appropriations by 21, almost 21.6 million. That's the amount that we are proposing to use our unassigned assigned fund balances. So how's that looking for us? So we're estimating right now our beginning for next fiscal year, ending this fiscal year, at $160,855,000. Again, using 21.6 million of it brings our estimated ending to $139,421. So I'm going to hit some highlights of our operating funds. The general fund, total appropriations, $112,026,86. Looking at the major categories, it's no big surprise that 56 percent of that deals with public safety. And when I speak to public safety, I'm speaking sheriff, jail, correctional works center, juvenile detention, building codes, emergency management, and rural fire. Some of the large items in the general fund is a 5.3 percent increase from the 18-19 amended appropriation. There's 20 full-time positions, net full-time positions in this budget, and 14 of them are in public safety. Total salaries, which includes these new positions, is an increase of 10 percent. And a big portion of that is implementation of our recent salary study for all departments. So I'm going back to say, with this proposal is an increase of seven cents to the property tax, but still we have a reliance of our unassigned fund balance of 5.8 million. If we were to try to balance revenue to appropriations, we would need 6.22 cents extra. So looking at all this, I thought this was an interesting graph to show you. For the general fund, 46 percent of the funding comes from the current property tax. 21 percent from other local taxes. 9 percent, this is several different things, licenses, permits, fees, fines, charges for services, and other local revenue, 9. Unassigned fund balance, so 5 percent of the appropriations will be using our fund balance to pay for those. Ambulance fund, recommending two cents to go to the ambulance fund. And I'm presenting it to you this way to help the public understand where we are with this proposal. So in the last two years, we've had, we budgeted decreases to the fund balance. In 1718, we had a budgeted decrease of a million dollars. In the current year, it's almost $2 million that we have budgeted into fund balance. This column here, if with our estimated revenues and appropriations, we would be using another 1.2, well, almost $2 million. With our fund balance to date is $2,145,000. That would leave us only $153,000 to go into the next year. Now, I looked at, I looked in July of this fiscal year, and those of you who are accountants, you understand that cash is just a component of fund balance. So I looked at how much cash we reduced down in July, and we reduced it down by about, what was it, $400,000, $500,000 net decrease of cash in July, because there's no property tax coming in at that point. I have it right here. Nope, I said wrong. It's a net reduction of $300,000. So looking at 2021 is the concern. So that is the reason why we were recommending adding at least two cents, so that they're not having to dig down into their fund balance. As presented, on a budgetary basis, it would still be using about $151,000 for the ambulance Going back to schools, general purpose schools, centralized cafeteria, educational capital projects. There's proposals for increase in taxes for the schools and education capital projects. So 7 percent increase over the 18-19 amended appropriation budget. The big things this year, we're opening two schools, a high school and an elementary school. So the budget for next year is $26.6 million increase over the amended budget and 28.4 over our original budget. With opening the schools, there's an additional 218.2 positions, and the recommendation is to increase the base tables for certified and classified staff by 2.5. So total salaries, including all their new positions, increased by 10.5 percent. So how are we going to cover that? Well, one is the proposed 8.2 cents increase in the property tax for education. So including that and the other local revenues, that's an increase of $13.7 million. And the school board is estimating increase to their BEP of $13.4 million. So even with this, with additional increase, there is a reliance of $15 million on the unassigned fund balance, which if you were trying to match it up, you'd need another Don't you wish it'd go next to the next slide? There we go. So the similar slide as the other one is to show you of the appropriation budget, where is the funding coming from? 56 percent of the appropriations will be covered by state dollars. 21 percent is covered by the current property tax. And showing you here, 4 percent of their budget will be covered by their unassigned fund balance. School capital projects fund, the recommendation is to add 2.8 cents to bring their total amount of property tax for improvements for capital projects to 7.5 cents. And these are just a in high summary of the things that they're planning to do. It's mechanical systems, re-roofing, flooring, elevators, playgrounds, paving, sewer projects, renovations, and safety and security measures. Road and bridge is another operating fund for us. This fund is showing a decrease in their appropriation from the current year, but it's primarily in this capital outlay line where they're estimating to spend a million dollars less than they did in the current year. 62 percent, I mean, this is what you would expect, is most of their money is being spent on highway and bridge maintenance. Their increase, as I said, 7.9 percent decrease in total appropriations from the amended budget. There's three new positions for a total of 70 in their budget. Their salaries increasing 7.3 percent. Estimated road mileage, another little interesting note, is how much they're responsible for is 972 miles. Debt service is our other major fund. I call it our mortgage payments for our household. Again, education is a large component. We're estimating $53.5 million right now in appropriations. So I just give this because most people do want to know where we are in our debt. We started the current fiscal year with $454,025,000. We issued 40, almost 40.7 million in debt, and we're scheduled to pay off 33, almost 33.5 million. So our ending debt at the end of this fiscal year will be $461,250,000, with $34,655 being scheduled to be retired off. So without any new debt, our outstanding debt would be $426,595,000. We'll be talking about this a little more, but the commission just approved over $17 million project in for the communication projects. We'll probably be borrowing for that in the fall, and we'll be scheduling that in to the next year's budget too, once we get those numbers, like tomorrow. And then sometime in the spring, we'll probably be issuing additional debt. I calculate around $35 million for schools and some other county projects. The school projects have already been approved, which was increasing the Christiana Middle Site work and design and Rocky Fork, no, Rock Springs Elementary. That's it. Okay. So that's the overall operating budget for next year, and that concludes my overview. Oh, yeah, oh, yes. Okay. You can find this presentation or the detail of the budget, RutherfordCountyTN.gov. Go to budget and finance department, and then go to this category, this part right here, proposed budget by year, and you'll find your, all the detailed budgets.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. At this time, we will start the public hearings, and this is how we normally would like to proceed. One at a time, come to the podium. At that time, state your name and your address for public record, and I think there's a pen and pencil there where you can also pencil your name in. Please keep your comments to three minutes. That'll give everybody a chance to talk, and we'll make sure that, I plan to stay here so everybody's been heard. Just to let you know, a little bit of history, the last time we had a tax increase, 2014, 15 year, 22 cents had been proposed, and we ended up with 19.8 cents. Is that correct?
19.33.
Again, tonight, we're here to listen. We want to hear your concerns. We will be discussing what we hear tonight at our next meeting, which is Wednesday, June 19th, at 5:30, which will be next door over here. But tonight, we're here to listen. We won't be responding to questions, is what I'm getting at. But I assure you, your concerns will be discussed. Anyway, at this time, we open the public hearing, and whoever would like to proceed up, please come forward. Like I said, state your name, your address, and...
My name is David Minor. I live at 6777 Givens Road, Last Cassis, Tennessee. To start off, I'd like to say that I and many other people of Rutherford County oppose the tax increase. I, as many others, feel that there are other avenues that the county could use to get the budget in check, such as raising the wheel tax $20. By doing this, it should affect every household about the same, whereas by raising property taxes, people with larger tracts of property would have to pay much more than someone on a half-acre lot in a subdivision. What's fair about that? For the commissioner who said that raising property taxes would be the easiest thing to do, remember, you were voted in by the people to be for the people. It's not about doing what is the easiest, it's about doing what's best for the people. Seems it's all about growth. Well, if growth can't sustain itself, then maybe the reins need to be pulled and somebody yell, "Whoa." I've lived in Rutherford County my whole life, and no disrespect to anyone, but I feel that I, nor anyone else, who have lived here all their life, should be charged for growth. I read on the Internet where the comment was made about the economy being so good. This is why they should raise him now instead of 2022, which, by the way, is election year. People of Rutherford County voted all the commissioners in to be a voice for them, and I'm afraid that this has fallen by the wayside. As for my commissioner, Steve Piercy, I will vote for him again because he is for the people in our community and throughout Rutherford County. I hope that this has not fallen on deaf ears, because I know that I'm not the only person who feels this way. Commissioners, don't do what's easiest, do what's right for the people.
My name's Doug Shaffer. I live at 192 Morning Side Drive in Laverne. I knew one was coming, an increase, but I think we have neglected in this august body from looking seriously at the fire tax. The rest of the county of people that live in the cities are paying for the unincorporated area to have a fire department. It brings down their homeowner's insurance, and it's paid, it's more than what they have right now, if it's spent in the county, in the unincorporated. The alcohol and beverage tax is used. It can be used on anything in the county. I think it should not be used for fire. It's not used in any of the cities to help them. The second thing is, there is some property tax. It used to be a lot more, it's barely anything now, but it's used for public works in the county. Nothing comes to Laverne, Smyrna, or Murfreesboro for public works. Thirdly, we've been buying fire trucks for the county departments, for the volunteers, for everything. I'm not against that now, but I think it's time those people start doing what the cities have to do. Secondly, I think that Rutherford County is playing the Neville Chamberlain to the state of Tennessee's Hitler. And I say that because they keep coming down with the mandates, they don't pay anything for the schools to build them, but they require us to have no more than X amount of kids in a classroom. If it goes over that, they can sue us, or fine us $75,000 or whatever it is. They don't, the state just recently, I think four years ago, finally started paying their full amount of insurance for the teachers when they say, and look, think of all the money we could have had over the years if they had been doing what the counties had. The county has to pick up what the state doesn't pay in raises. When the governor says 2.5 percent, that's not from the base that's in Rutherford County, that's from the base somewhere, state average or whatever. So we are having to pick up, as taxpayers here, the rest of that. I saw in one of the local papers that a state legislator said, "Well, you need to look at year-round school." I know I've done that a lot in my life, and I've looked at it, and what I've found from around the country is the fact that it's good in the short run, but it costs a lot more in the long run, in more ways than one. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Master Sergeant Ross List, and I live at 4410 Mordecai Avenue. I'm a retired combat veteran, 13 tours for 51st and 51st State Iraq and Afghanistan. I came home to Tennessee because I have lived around the world, I've had 20 years of service, and there wasn't a better place I could make up than come home and raise my family. I don't know if any of you have gone through retirement before. My family's income was cut by a third. It takes three to six months to get my disability, my retirement, and also any kind of pension and any kind of medical care. I thank my family in Rutherford County for taking in a family of three and two pets coming in from England. Two college-educated adults, both with 10 years of management and leadership positions, had to work part-time jobs to find ways to find a home. My wife works a retail job over on the avenue, and I worked a county voter position over here, working a machine last year. I used my VA home loan and bought a home over in the Blackman area, within walking distance of three schools, hoping that my child would have a stable home, because most kids in the military move a lot. My child's six years old, and she's lived in four different places in two different countries. My wife has a master's degree in education, early childhood education, can't find a job in Rutherford County. I tell you not this for sympathy, but for an example, my wife and I did what we had to do to pay the bills. I cut my overhead, I lived on my needs, I sold stocks, I lived on my savings. To put everything in perspective, to make sure to pay the bills, I'm glad we had zero debt when I left the military, because I planned to be comfortable in my retirement. I was wrong, being struggled with everything. I taught my little girl, who's a pretty citizen, that if you want something, you have to save for it. I'm not asking that we don't need a property tax, but to punish us for the mismanagement of our money by the government is a drastic increase, because in the next month, my property tax will go up 55.8 percent if this goes up, because I live in the city also. This is a punishment of the child for the sins of the parent. I ask, if we have a savings, we want the tax increase. We put projects on hold, we lay away, whatever you want to call it. We fix our mismanagement, we spend, we're living beyond our means. And I'll end with a presidential quote. "We, the people, tell the government what to do." It doesn't tell us what to do. "We, the people, are the driver. The government is the car. And when we decide where it should go, when it should, what route, how fast it should go, and when it should stop, well, the car's gone sideways, and I will tell you, it's time for a new car."
My name is Cindy Salisbury. I live at 522 Peachtree Street. I didn't write anything because I wasn't sure I was going to even be able to make it tonight. Four years ago, I was diagnosed with MS. I worked for an attorney... I worked for an attorney, a law firm here in town. At the end of 2017, I was no longer able to work full-time. My neurologist suggested that I get on Social Security Disability. I had a lot of people praying for me. It only took six months versus a year and a half to two years. With that said, I bring in $1,295 a month, and I'm pretty sure most people in this room realize this, how difficult that is. I know that I represent more than just myself here. A lot of people are on fixed incomes in this county or in the city. I also pay city and county taxes. I've heard that the county taxes are also going to be raised this year. I'm from Tennessee. I moved here 10 and 1/2 years ago, and I absolutely love Murfreesboro. I love the old part, and I'm happy that the new has come, but I just want to let you know that even $35, I don't, it doesn't matter what it is, is a lot of money to me. I don't have cable, I don't have a whole lot of stuff. I'm very, very blessed, I'm not complaining, but at the end of 17, I was struggling to pay my 2018 taxes. I'm trying to pay those now before October, and now, then I've got to start on my 2019. It's not a sob story, I don't want pity, I'm doing the best I can. I do get to work part-time at times. What boggles me and what is really the weight of my fear here is that it was raised so high, 35 or 36% is a lot. If you had come in with 10, 15, 20% plus the county, I probably wouldn't have as much of a hard time. I don't have a big house, it's not that expensive, I thank God for it, but please, consider the people who are on disability, the people who don't have a lot. I have a lot more than most. I know that, because I'm very blessed. I don't have a lot of money. I have had to use my savings. I can't even get health care. I have zero health care, and I need MRIs and other things of that nature. But if I go to a doctor, it costs hundreds of dollars, and I just can't go. So just please hear us, please, don't just hear us, please act upon it. You know, we all in this room, everybody cares about this city, and we want it to grow. So, thank you.
Some of us all have that problem. Thank you, Commissioner P., and committee members, for this opportunity to address the Budget and Finance Committee. My name is Avant Lane. I'm a lifelong resident of the county and reside at 221 North Highland Avenue in Murfreesboro. Tonight's comment is about dealings with the issue of money. That's a tender subject. Specifically, the budget and the rumor of raising the property tax rate 20 cents. Now, we could have discussions ad infinitum about prior administrations not doing their due diligence and raising the tax rate in an incremental and reasonable way over the past years, decades, but that would serve no purpose. So what's the purpose? We have a serious problem with our budget shortfall, and to find a better way to fix it, other than an arbitrary increase in the tax rate on the taxpayers, is what we need to do. So how we do this? If we properly review the tax budget, there are several ways to reconcile this problem. One of the ways is what I'm going to comment on tonight. There are quite a few other ways, but I'm going to stick to our own point, because I get sideways sometime. What I'm bringing up is the situation we have of the current unpaid delinquent property taxes. If you look at the latest information from the Rutherford County Chancery Court that I provided to you, Richard Gooch, I'll give you your copy, I don't think you have a copy, but if you look at the latest information, you'll see on the last page that is highlighted, there is a grand total of $1,014,834.84. That was checked this morning. It's current, it's what it says it is. If that's not right, I can't help that, that's what I understand. One question to the commissioner, and as Commissioner P., I don't expect an answer tonight. I want to know, why raise property taxes on people that have been and are paying their share responsibly and not go after the property taxes that have been owed since 2008? In addition, I understand that according to the statute, property taxes that have not been collected for 10 years become null and can't be collected. Each year, there are property taxes that have not been collected and fall into that 10-year limit hold. The commissioners need to hold the people responsible for getting this done. Please note, this is a penny. This is one of those pennies she was talking about, that we talked earlier. I think there are 19 other cents more out there in the budget we can find. Thank you all.
My husband and I moved here 15 years ago. I'm a native Tennessean, however. These taxes won't hurt me like they will hurt the other people. We've provided for ourselves good incomes. We've retired from police department, US Air Force, and from businesses that we ran. If we'd operated our three businesses on at least a quarter deficit every year, we'd have never made it, and we wouldn't have any retirement. I'm speaking for the poor and the senior citizens of this community, who this will hurt the most. My tax bill and theirs is going up 50% because you don't give the poor and the seniors any kind of discount. I want this city to survive. It's a wonderful city, but you can't keep operating your budget at deficit levels. I want to see the police captain earn as much as your golf pro. I know what they earn, I know what we earned at the police department, what my husband earned. You're not being fair in your distribution of wages. I think you should look at them. They're at the level of medium to low income. Your tax increase is going to hurt them, but yet we need their service. I don't know what you've done here to get yourself in this pickle. What are you gaining from the developers here? You cut them a break. You don't tax them like you do us. You've got to change your methods. You don't want citizens to start leaving here. Your cheapest apartment is over $1,000 for one bedroom, and that's, I've seen them, my grandchild lived in one, mold was growing everywhere. Unless college students share that one bedroom or two-bedroom, they can't live here. Think of what you're doing for your citizens, not just the growth. You don't want to become a huge citizen or a huge city like Nashville. You want to take care of everyone here. You want everyone to matter. You want to help the teachers, you want to have the best schools, you want to be able to get good jobs. I agree with all that, but you're giving these businesses these huge tax... They don't have to pay them. I read, I know what the governor does, I know what's happening here. I'm just sorry I didn't get involved before, because I would have liked my husband to run for office. He's more experienced at this than I am. But you're really letting your citizens down, and frankly, the deficit, I'm ashamed of you all.
I live at 4563 Jones Road, Christiana. As I address you again tonight, I do not stand before you as an enemy, but an ally. Not an opponent, but a teammate. We must work together, community and representatives, to come up with a solution to mitigate this request for a tax increase. Also don't believe in reinventing the wheel. If someone else has an idea that works, let's use it. The proposal I make to you tonight could eliminate the need for at least seven and possibly nine cents of this tax increase. Bear with me, as I will be getting into the weeds just a little bit. It was proposed at the beginning of the budget process to provide essentially a 4.25% raise, the 1.75% for cost of living, and then the 2.5% lift. I'm here to encourage you tonight to adopt that proposal, as opposed to the current budget plan. I contend the 4.25% across-the-board raise for the positions will get most employees within a margin of the salary study. Whilst I'm meticulously eliminating the excessive raises at the tune of 8% to 17%, not including the constitutional officers, it will save us approximately $2.6 million, or almost 3 cents on our property tax. Now, couple that with an expected revenue increase, or above expected revenues of $3.9 million, as outlined in the recent June Budget Committee meeting, plus any unspent funds from this fiscal year, you could comfortably spend the remaining equivalent from fund balance of 4 cents to reduce that portion of the tax increase. Now, we'll need, now, we need to look at the impact of the shift in the raise structure on the 2 cents for the ambulance fund. But I have to apologize, I didn't have enough time to dive into that particular issue. But I do respectfully request, as you review this public hearing, to examine if you can eliminate that 2 cents as well, for a total reduction of 9 cents of this 20-cent tax increase. Just remember, we're all on the same team, so let's work together to achieve our goals.
I live at 315 North Manny, right in the heart of the old Murfreesboro. I love this town. I came here as an entrepreneur and opened a bicycle shop, was successful at that, ran that for a number of years, was involved in the Greenway Project, the original Greenway, when there wasn't even an old Fort Parkway. I'm going to talk just shortly about the solid waste issue. To increase the budget, to put in a building project for that, when we have no solid waste program now, and I know I've been talking to Mr. Kethren about it, he knows my feelings, we're developing a plan, but at this point, to increase the taxes on that particular project at all just puts an undue burden on it. We know there's going to be an increase coming, but what is it? And to increase taxes now and not have a plan for our solid waste in this community is irresponsible. Thank you very much.
My name is Susan Allen. I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I know how hard you work. I spent some time looking over the proposed budget, mainly the expenditures, and what I started looking at, what I was particularly interested in, were the increases paid to department heads, but that expanded to looking at differences between what a department requested and what was recommended by the mayor and approved by the Budget Committee. The budget is huge, but I basically looked at 14 accounts and didn't even consider the schools or anything that had to do with health and safety. So the 14 accounts were partial, I looked at partial salary lists, not including the associated increases in benefits, pensions, insurance, dues, membership, travel, and so on. And the difference between what the departments requested and what the mayor recommended and the Budget Committee approved for this proposed budget came to $1,352,292. And I would like to know what the justification is for having that amount, allocating that amount over what the department heads requested. And I would appreciate it if you would go back over those numbers and, if possible, reduce the amount to what the budget, what the departments requested. Also, what, something that jumped out at me, that I would like an explanation of, I looked at the building improvements, and I don't know if this is just improvements, if it's maintenance, if it's, you know, repairing roofs or what, but the current budget for that is $91,654, and it's going up to $400,000. That's a big jump, and I would just like to have more information on what justifies that increase. Thank you.
My name's Ronald Williams. I live at 1109 Over sales road out in Rockvale, and I don't have really any details tonight, except that I would like to encourage you to look at this budget and the items in there, to whether it's a priority, a need, or just a want. Now, for nine years, I've wanted a tractor that had a cab on it, and every year, in the winter, I'm going to get me one next year, but I'm still driving one without it, because it has not come a serious enough need for me to spend that kind of money, because my old tractor still wants. Years ago, I used to work down in Nashville, and they were going to close the Shelby Street Bridge, and everybody was all up in arms. They closed it, 30 days later, nobody could remember what happened, everybody got to work and back from work, so when you do things that you, to save money and to do things, sometimes it's just not that big of a deal. Years ago, up here, we were going to do a renovation down at Iggleville School. Had to have an auditorium, and needed one for years, and we finally approved it with the condition that we would do it when we had the money without raising the taxes. Now, we went through the process, we postponed it, and Iggleville eventually got it, and it worked out good. But we didn't go raise the property tax to give something that was not a necessity at that time. Now, in my household, a necessity is a lot different than maybe in another bunch of y'all's, but I would just like to encourage y'all to look at that. And there's one group of people that get overlooked in this county, and that's the renters. I've looked, tried to find out how many renters we have, somewhere between 35 and 50% of the people in Rutherford County now are renters. Renters pay property taxes through landlords and through the other folks. They have nobody standing up for him, for them, and that, and I'd just like for y'all to really consider, when you start raising this, all of the landlords and all the things are, they're just going to pass that on to these people, but there's a whole bunch of people here in this county that are really going to be suffering from this tax increase. So I wish y'all would look at these things and see if things can be postponed, put off, or just done away with. Thank you.
My name is Teresa St. Clair, and I live at 2525 Retreat Court, and I wasn't actually going to say anything tonight, because I'm tired of complaining. My complaint has always been about the fraud, waste, and abuse that goes on in the employee benefits. And I complained about this the first time in 2013, and the best I could get was a law... And I complained about this the first time in 2013, and the best I could get was a love letter from the attorney telling me to destroy the evidence. Fifty percent overcharge, 50% out of $60 million every year, and nobody ever stops to say, "Maybe we should do an audit." That just doesn't sound right. Nobody says anything. Nobody does anything. I recommended the audit, and I got a love letter. So 50% overcharge out of $60 million. I know this, this day is about math. That is probably $100 million right now after all these years, and nobody questions it. You'd sit back and talk about how much money is in the pot, and you want to get your hands on it, and thank God we stopped that. But nobody has done anything about it. It's called fraud, waste, and abuse, and it happens right here. Thank you.
My name's Brandon. 3194 Holstead in Murfreesboro here. You might tell by my hat, but I don't like taxes. I just went through a 36% increase for the city of Murfreesboro, and I don't want to add another 20 cents on top of that. The issue is that, you know, with the city is that nobody's willing to do a balanced budget. Nobody's willing to audit. Nobody's willing to talk about cuts at the city level, and it sounds like there's a lot of that going on at the county level as well. So, you know, since I came to Tennessee in 2002, I've been pretty blessed. I would like to see this great area continue to grow. I would like to see us do it without the kind of cronyism that we've seen in the city operations. You know, sweetheart deals for developers, tax breaks, all that fun stuff. What I'd like to see instead is creative ways to raise revenue without increases in taxes. There are proposals up north where city and county assets are evaluated, appraised, and then leased to businesses for advertising purposes, buildings and rooms rented out, all this type of thing. So you gain revenue from that lease agreement, and as part of the contract, the corporation or the business also pays the maintenance fees and the cost of maintenance and maintaining the property. So you remove that expense from the budget and also gain that revenue, all without a tax increase. So that's just one of many proposals that I would like to see at least explored, is a way to alleviate the burden on us while still gaining the money that needs to be gained by the city and the county as well. So, so that's really all there is to say. You know, we, we love living here. We don't want to see Murfreesboro become Detroit. We don't want to see Murfreesboro become New York State. We would like to see Murfreesboro and Rutherford County continue to grow and be a great place to live. So, thank you.
[inaudible]
McKnollton? Thanks.
I live at 13803 Big Springs Road. The property that I live on has been in my family for the last two centuries. I've never sent my kids to public school. I think we can all agree that development is why we need new high schools and why we need new judicial buildings. Developers pay $1,500 towards a school fund in a impact fee. That's per lot. If you could find a house for $150,000, that is 1%. So development is not paying its share. I'll just put it that way. An average, according to a national survey, an average high school costs $45 million. This was in 2014. The one in Rockvale, I'm sure, costs more than that. There's, my guess is about 1,500 new houses coming online every year. There are other communities, the other developers come in here, they, they ask questions like, "Do we have a traffic impact fee?" Or "Do we have something of those natures that they're used to paying in other communities?" You know, if you, if you have a 200-acre lot and you're going to develop it and put out 700-plus houses on there at two cars per house, that's 1,400 cars that you're dumping out onto an existing road. As I said, development needs to, development needs to sustain itself and not punish those who have paid taxes on the same real estate, their families, for the last 200 years.
I'm Zach McLean. I live at 987 Shaw Court in Murfreesboro, right over the woods from Rockvale High. I just want to make sure that it's known, next time you guys talk about this, that this budget that you guys just gave us is just a tax and spend budget. You reduced the debt by, what, 15 million? And then in the next slide, explain to us how you were going to add 50 million to the debt. Who's paying for that next year? Will we raise them to taxes again? Are you guys going to wait until what the city did and just all of a sudden raise them by 30%? It's ridiculous how you guys can't find anything that we need to cut in the budget, but you'll gladly add 50 million to the debt. I mean, call me greedy, but at what point is the debt going to go down? We're dealing with this on every single level of government in the world. This is ridiculous. Somebody's going to find this money. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Tenpenny. I live at 9483 Weatherly Road in Las Casas, and I own property at 1807 East Main Street. I was born and raised here, and I've lived here almost my entire life. And unlike most of these people here, I don't like it. I don't like it anymore. There's been too much that's come in too quick, and you asking me to pay too much too quick. When I have to sit in traffic on Memorial Boulevard at 6:30 at night in Murfreesboro, I don't like it, and I'm looking to move because I don't want to live here anymore the way it's going. My entire life, I've heard about insider trading around here, insider deals, cronyism, all this sort of stuff. I know a lot of developers. My daddy put in central heat and air for a lot of developers, and I've watched things happen. I watched certain people making all the money, just like when I worked at MTSU, the president's salary going up and up and up while I was asked to work for a salary that had not changed in 40 years. It still has not changed. Constantly, the upper-level jobs are getting higher and higher raises while, people talk about, "There's plenty of jobs around here." Yeah, there's plenty of jobs around here if you want to work for $10 an hour. I do not want to work for $10 an hour. I'm not going to be able to retire here. As much as I saved, as much as my family achieved here and thought that we were going to be good, middle-class people, it's just completely changed. I mean, it's getting to where nobody can afford to live here that was born here, that was raised here. Sure, you've got plenty of people coming in from all sorts of other states that think that it's a great cost of living here, and there's a lot of people getting really rich off of it, and you're just forcing us out that we're born and raised here. Thank you.
Amen.
I'm Sandy Buttry at 125 Edgewater Falls, and not only does this property tax affect the home, it affects the small businesses as well because we are taxed on every single thing in our business, and now by Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. So all of that is going up as well, not just our property tax on our homes, our property tax for our businesses. And that's just going to cause more and more small businesses to have to leave if they cannot continue to afford that. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
My name's Ashley Frye, and I haven't lived in Rutherford County my entire life, but I will say I'm a 1971 graduate of Central, so I've been here long enough to recognize the changes that have taken place here. My working life was in automotive manufacturing and spent the last six years as plant manager, as a matter of fact, so I understand the challenges associated with, you know, expenditures versus revenues. And I also found that there's more than one way to skin a cat, and I would ask that you go back and take a look at the potential for privatization of various aspects of the government. I worked my way through MTSU, working at the old Rutherford Hospital Emergency Room. In fact, I was one of the first, I was in the inaugural class of EMTs that went to work, and prior to the county taking over the ambulance service, Jennings and Ayers and Woodfin's funeral homes ran the ambulance services. Bubba Woodfin and Eddie Ayers were regulars at the, at the emergency room. Now, I'm not advocating that we outsource our ambulance service to a funeral home. Seems to be a conflict of interest in my mind. But please take that consideration back. Take a look. There might be something out there that might be an easy move that would help alleviate this condition that we're in. Thank you very much.
I'm Marvin Turner. I live at 715 Majesty Drive here in Murfreesboro myself. Many of you do know I'm a county employee as well, and living in the city of Murfreesboro, my taxes are going up the 36 cents roughly per 100, along with additional rated 20% chance here. That makes my taxes go up almost approximately $1,200 over this next year. With that being said, you know, you're looking at, you know, employee tax increase for us, but you give me a tax, I pay increase, and I also increase my taxes. I know that's not necessarily all the fault of the city, you know, increase there's 36 cents the same year as you guys are wanting to increase 20 cents. It's not necessarily your fault, but we certainly do need to take that in consideration, that you're asking, you're giving employees a pay increase, but yet you're going to have their taxes go up too at the same time, and so I'm right back to square zero. What good am I getting for a pay increase? I'm going to balance out, you know, to very little at that point as a, as a plus for an actual income coming over the next year. So with that being said, just make sure you think that through as well when you're putting this budget increase through, what you're doing to your own county employees. Thank you.
If anybody feels moved to come up, you know, I sound like one of my preachers back home, but please come on up.
My name is Linda Robinson, and we are, we live at 14970 Mount Pleasant Road in Rockvale. And I have two things I need to ask you about. The high tax raises, we are retired, and we are very close to being run out of Rutherford County. We own two and a half acres in, out on Mount Pleasant, and our taxes are going to raise Our taxes are going to be $2,658 next year. That's a lot for a retired couple. Also, I have another thing I need to ask you. If you would please address and maybe take a look at your program for the folks who are trying to come in to your office and apply for the tax freeze. They can't come in to make an appointment until October, and so then they have to sit down and make an appointment to come in and talk to somebody to get the, to see if they can get approved for that tax freeze. So I would, I would like to ask you to please just take a look at that plan and see if you could maybe work something out where someone can come in and, that needs that tax freeze for next year. For all these people that are on social security, I don't see how they're going to make this, this tax increase. I really don't. But I really would like to see you maybe advertise it more so that a lot of people could take advantage of your tax freeze and maybe let them come in earlier than October to make application. Because I understand that you have to call and make the appointment, and then you have to wait in line to come in to make application. Thank you.
Seeing none, coming forward, I want to thank all of you tonight, and I want to tell you that many of you have brought concerns up, that all of us feel your concerns and your questions. We're going to try to answer all them. We will be looking at them. As I said earlier, our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, this Wednesday, June the 19th at 5:30, where we will discuss this. We'll also have another meeting on June the 24th, at which time we are to recommend a tax levy and appropriation resolution. Then, of course, on June 26th, on Wednesday at 9:00 AM, we meet here to adopt the budget. Having said that, Mayor, anything you'd like to say? No? In that case, I want to thank all of you for your participation. Thank you.